Hello. Welcome, everyone. My name is Essie Morgan. I'm Division Head of Rheumatology at Seattle Children's Hospital, Professor of Pediatrics at University of Washington, and Principal Investigator of Pediatric Rheumatology Care and Outcomes Improvement Network, or PRCOIN. It's a great pleasure to kick off a special webinar sponsored by Frontiers in Pediatrics. This webinar is part of the PRCOIN Fall 2025 Learning Session. This hybrid session where we have people in the room, and we have lots of folks on the webinar. And I'm not sure why I'm showing up on the webinar. I'm in the room. So we are a learning health network with the vision that all children with rheumatic diseases will have excellent health outcomes under the care of highly effective pediatric rheumatology teams. In this special three-part webinar, I'm going to introduce our first speaker here momentarily. And after Q and A, he'll transition to our second speaker. And then we'll transition to a special panel about the Frontiers in Pediatrics special issue on building a learning health system in pediatric rheumatology. So we are having the special panel sponsored by Frontiers in Pediatrics in order to open up this session to a larger audience outside of even the PRCOIN membership. And so the session is being recorded to be shared later. So our first speaker, I'm delighted to introduce, is Dr. Peter Margolis. He is a leading expert in studying and applying systems improvement methods to enhance health outcomes for children and families. He's adjunct professor of Pediatrics at Stanford University School of Medicine, and he's a Meredith's Professor at University of Cincinnati School of Medicine, where he was the former co-director of the James M. Anderson Center for Health Systems Excellence. There, he dedicated his career to advancing the science of networked learning health systems. For over two decades, Dr. Margolis and his team have pioneered innovative approaches to engage patients, families, clinicians, and communities in developing network-based systems. And this has consistently demonstrated an impact on improving care. And notably, he has been the scientific director of the Improved Care Now Network, which received the prestigious Drucker Prize, which is the largest nonprofit management and innovation award in the United States. In addition to this work, his extensive experience includes large-scale comparative effectiveness research, creating major interoperable data systems, and engaging diverse stakeholders to co-produce research and better care. Previously served as Chair of the PCORnet Council, guiding the PCORs' efforts to transform the research infrastructure across the United States. And he's an elected member of the National Academy of Medicine. And he's a highly respected voice in the field of healthcare improvement. We're so thrilled that he's here today. Dr. Margolis was a Senior Improvement Advisor for PRCOIN from our inception. He's mentored us in developing this network, and he's mentored many of us as individuals. So it's really a privilege to have him here to address our network and the broader community. So we'll turn it over to you, Peter.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Essie. And it's so, it's so much fun to actually get to talk to everybody and to be here today. And I'm sorry I can't be in Seattle. I'm really sorry I can't be in Seattle at this time of year there. I'm just wondering whether we should use, shall I share my slides from?
Yeah, can we have you share your screen? And then we'll see if we can present it here in the room as well and make sure that it works for people online.
So is this, is this working?
Yes, we can see it in the room. Can we get a quick thumbs up from? Yep, Anna Marie says that we're live as well for the virtual, so we're all good. Thank you.
Great. So thanks so, thanks so much to everybody. I, I just want to begin by recognizing the PRCOIN network. This community has brought together clinicians, researchers, families, leaders who are committed to improving outcomes for kids with rheumatologic conditions. And really, you've been a pioneer, not just in advancing care for patients, but showing what's possible when we organize ourselves differently as a learning health network. And everything I'll talk about today, the national attention, the innovations, the network effect, it all builds on the foundation of what you're creating here. I was, I asked Essie to share some of the more recent results. And it's always exciting to see that you're, that the network is demonstrating measurable improvements in outcomes that matter to patients and families. And what you're showing is that when we connect across centers, we can learn from one another. And we can embed improvement into everyday care. We can start to move the needle. This is, this is not only a model for rheumatology, but it's a point of evidence for the entire field. What you're doing is giving us credit, is giving credibility to the case for networks everywhere. The, the work that you're doing in PRCOIN is part of a really much larger study, story. Learning, learning networks are no longer limited to one or two conditions. They've expanded across pediatrics into adult medicine and even beyond healthcare into fields like education. What you can see in the upper right-hand corner is some of the work that's starting to take place outside of healthcare. And why this is because the approach solves problems that individual organizations simply can't solve alone. And for, for those who are here today, this means that the innovations and credibility that's being generated in those networks can flow back into PRCOIN as well, the same way that your work inspires others. New networks keep forming, like this one that's in formation now around food allergy. And when new networks form, they often point to other networks, like PRCOIN is an example of what's possible. And the lesson is that by proving the model here in PRCOIN, we're helping, you've helped to create the field. And when that field grows, PRCOIN gains allies. It gains resources and ideas that strengthen your own work. But we still face fundamental system challenges that are holding us back. System challenges like the ones listed on this slide. First, a coordination challenge. Sectors like healthcare, payers, and industry are all optimizing for their own goals rather than for the whole. Second, our capacity problems. The system can't meet the diverse and personalized needs of patients and clinicians who often lack the time and even applicable evidence. And the third is a distribution of labor. Who gets to participate and how? Patients and families are too often excluded from designing and doing the work. And these system problems keep us from advancing the outcomes that we know are possible. PRCOIN has already modeled how to tackle these challenges at the disease level. And the opportunity now is to start to connect that learning with others facing the same system-wide issues. Network leaders have consistently, over the years, pointed to barriers, misaligned payment models, lack of reusable technology and better data capture and analytics, legal and administrative barriers to data sharing, and weak communication of networks' values. And if we aggress, if we address these together, the benefit comes back to you, to lower costs for your site, for less duplication of effort, for stronger arguments for hospital leaders about why PRCOIN is worth investing in. I want to share, I want to start with sharing a little bit of work about what's happening at a national level. And I want to start with the work in the National Academy of Medicine. There's ongoing focus around outcomes that we should expect from healthcare. The, and this is what the National Academy is calling its Shared Commitments for Health and Healthcare Initiative. Healthcare, the point is this, healthcare only gets better as a system when all the parts line up around shared purpose. And although we all know that the purpose is pretty simple to say, but it's hard to do. Better health for every patient, care that's accessible, anchored in people's goals, measured by the outcomes that matter to them and their care team, and reinforced by learning that begins and ends with their lived experience. I'm co-chairing the National Academy's strategy for growing the emphasis on learning health systems as part of this initiative. The National Academy of Medicine didn't start from scratch here, as you know. It built on landmark reports like To Air as Human and Crossing the Quality Chasm, which gave us the classic six aims of quality: care that's safe, effective, patient-centered, timely, efficient, and equitable. The shared commitments update and expand on that foundation. They add expectations that reflect what patients and communities need now: engagement, transparency, accountability, security, and adaptability, and a focus on both health and healthcare. So you can think of the shared commitments as a kind of trust framework. They work in really three ways. First, they're a compass to help diverse actors align on a direction. Second, they're a mirror that lets organizations see if their actions match their words. And third, they're a connector. They bridge across, the idea is that they bridge across sectors that often operate in silos. In short, they give us common ground, a way for patients and clinicians and communities to work together towards a system in which there's greater cooperation and interconnection across stakeholders and across sectors, a system that's more agile and responsive and capable of ensuring better health. So for everyone in PRCOIN, this matters because it raises the credibility of the work you're doing. When you can make the case to your CMO or your CFO about why PRCOIN matters, you can point to the National Academy and say, this is where national policy is heading, and PRCOIN is part of that. In the recent New England Journal article about the initiative, we highlighted that learning can take place at many different levels of the health system. And in fact, you can think of learning health systems as operating for an individual patient, for 10 patients, for 100 patients, for 1,000 patients, or for millions of patients. Networks are literally pictured at the top of the scale of evidence generation and care improvement. And that visibility isn't abstract. It directly strengthens the argument for your hospital to continue supporting your site's participation. Another sign of momentum is the attention from thought leaders. Dan Hyman and I were invited to join the IHI's Turn on the Lights podcast with Don Berwick and Kedar Mate. And their comments were encouraging. Don said we should do the obvious, get, get together and learn from one another. Kedar argued that networks are the future and even suggest, suggested, and in a serious way, that it's close to malpractice for hospitals not to be part of them. This kind of language from leaders in healthcare improvement underscores just how central networks have become. Paul Batalden has long reminded us of that systems succeed or fail not because of how they, the parts perform individually, but because of how they, the parts interact, the people and the parts interact. And Oystein Fieldstad has shown that actor-oriented networks built on participants, shared resources, and protocols for collaboration are powerful organizational forms. Together, Paul and Oystein have been studying leadership in networks. And what they're finding is that leadership looks different here in networks than it does in a hierarchical organization. It's distributed. Networks become vibrant when more people step up to build community, to encourage problem solving, to create tools and resources that everyone can advance. And in PRCOIN, you're, you practice this already. Every time a patient co-leads a project, every time a site shares a QI tool that others can use, that's what makes a network thrive. I also want to talk about the growing movement around accountable whole-person care, value-based care. Duke, the Duke Health Policy Center and West Health are building learning hubs to accelerate value-based care. They see networks as a core infrastructure for improving value in healthcare. And their initiative is addressing factors that have slowed the uptake of value-based care. Evaluations can take years and often don't explain how success was achieved. Insights from the frontline don't reach policymakers fast enough. And the goal of the hub is to start to bridge that gap between frontline learning and system-level payment and policy. We can scale what works up, works much more quickly. And for PRCOIN participants, this means that when policy shifts towards paying for learning and improvement, you're already ahead of the curve. Your work positions your hospital to be ready for what's next. And this work is spreading into education and other sectors. Improvement networks are being recognized as a legitimate field of work. And in education, there is a whole community that's coming together to encourage multiple improvement networks that exist in the field of, of education to begin to work together in a coordinated and aligned strategy to actually advance this as a field. So for everybody who's part of an individual network, it means that we're not part of, that we're part of a broader wave of credibility that makes it easier, we hope, to sustain the work that we're doing. About two years ago, we organized a design day to imagine what the next generation of learning health networks might be. And our goal was to stimulate ongoing innovation that could advance the work. This is the vision that we used as a prompt for inspiration, for creative thinking. And we imagined that by 2033, networks would become central to equitable health systems, lowering costs and improving lives. Millions more people would live healthier lives because we mobilize the diverse expertise, solve problems continuously, and embedded learning into everyday care. And for us in an individual network, this means that the work we're doing in networks like PRCOIN or Improved Care Now isn't just about our own disease. It's about, it's part of reshaping the whole system in ways that will come back to benefit our patients and our sites. And, and we're already starting to see glimpses of this. At the design day, we mapped out ideas for the future of networks. There were about 38 constellations or design concepts. And we're already starting to see them take shape. For example, I'll show you in a second, an example of how our technology platform is starting to be able to use natural language processing to capture free text from biopsy forms and turn it into structured data. There's adoption of a common data model. We're hosting our first leadership development workshop next week at the Improved Care Now Community Conference. Amy is going to talk in a minute about reimbursement strategies that are emerging for chronic conditions. And we're beginning to try, test approaches to simplify participation in research and give more people the opportunity to actually contribute their data to research by testing tools and strategies to reduce the burden of informed consent. This is a screenshot from the Hive Technology Platform of their natural language processing tool that's been created for the IROC team so that unstructured kidney biopsy data can be turned into structured data elements. And this tool is going to be available very shortly for other networks that want to include data from unstructured data in our electronic health records. I want to also turn to say a little bit more about sustainability. The thesis is simple. We have to be just as intentional about how networks create and assure sustainability as we are about improving outcomes. The same discipline we bring to improving outcomes, we have to bring to sustaining networks. Outcomes tell us what's possible. Business models tell us what's sustainable. And so business model awareness isn't abstract. It helps us make smarter choices about where to invest, how to grow, what to test. And we, when we talk about sustainability, it can't just be at the level of a single network. The real opportunity is to think across networks, to share infrastructure, to spread what works, and to reduce the cost by acting more as an ecosystem. That's the vision for what we're thinking about as a network of networks. As we thought more about sustainability, we engaged a top consulting group to take a hard look at the future. And their recommendation was that right now, networks operate too independently, often connected only through a handful of individuals or institutions. And that limits our reach and resilience. The next stage is different. It's about formalized collaboration across networks with shared infrastructure, common tools, the ability to move learnings quickly from one network to another. That's the vision of a real ecosystem, a network of networks, where each network strengthens the others. And just like what we do within an individual network, where one site's success becomes a model for the other, at the ecosystem level, one network's innovation can rapidly become available to all. And that's how we scale impact and ensure sustainability. Think, think of this, you can think of this from the perspective of open source software. Red Hat is a company that supports the development of and implementation of Linux. Contribute, share, reuse, and improve each other's work. Networks can do the same. PRCOIN can both contribute and benefit. And that's how we move from isolated efforts. So at the core of this, one network improves network outcomes in one condition. But when networks connect, innovations flow across them, and each network multiplies value for the others. For an individual network, that means that we can punch above our weight. You don't, we don't just have to benefit from what happens in our network. We can benefit from what happens in Improved Care Now, in IROC, in the bipolar network, and beyond. And others are beginning to see this. Some of you are aware that Michael Said and I created, submitted a grant to the MacArthur Foundation Hundred and Change Competition. This is a $100 million grant given to a single bold idea. We didn't make it to, to win the award, but we were identified as, but learning health networks were identified as a top candidate. And there, we're now included. All of our networks are included in what the MacArthur Foundation calls their Bold Solutions Network, which is essentially a brokerage to large donors who want to invest in powerful ideas. Funders and investors are also recognizing this model as one of the most promising approaches to change that exists. And so for networks like PRCOIN, this kind of external validation matters because it makes your work more fundable, more sustainable, and more credible in the eyes of those who care. And what you can see on this particular slide is the text from the very beginning of the, of the MacArthur proposal. So here's, here's my suggestion for action. So our charge is really twofold. First, we have to keep demonstrating impact here in individual networks. That builds, that build, that delivers better health for individuals, and it builds credibility. And second, we need to join across networks to shape the field. And that, that builds influence and sustainability. So I'll just leave you with this. Will we be seen in the future as isolated network efforts, each working on our own? Or will be, will be, be seen a little bit more as a movement defining what's possible? It's, you can think of this almost as a gardening analogy. This work requires cultivation. And my hope is that if we do it together, we'll have a greater impact for our patients, for our individual care centers, and for the system as a whole. So thank you again for allowing me to share a little bit with you. And I think we probably have a few minutes for questions.
Hi, Dr. Margolis. Yes, we have some time for discussions. So the way that we can run this is if there are questions from anyone who is in the room, feel free to raise your hand, and we can run a mic to you. And then for those of you who are online, you can either choose to enter your question in the chat, and we'll have someone read it off, or you can raise your hand, and then we'll call on you, and you can ask your question.
Hi, Dr. Margolis. This is Chita Alvora. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Unfortunately, I can't see you, but.
I know, I know.
Glad to hear your voice.
Exactly. That was a very inspiring talk. I'm excited to see the leap forward for different networks to work together, to leverage faster innovation and, and work together. And, you know, I have done this before by reaching out to the Improved Care Now Network for help. And so it's wonderful to see this actually becoming conceptualized and, and grown. My question for you is, can we start? Or what suggestions would you make as this larger movement is being organized into motion at our own institutions, where we have members of different specialties, part of Improved Care Now, myself and PRCOIN, others in IROC? What can we do at a local institutional level to get those juices flowing, to work together so that we can, you know, perhaps work with the EMR in a faster way so that they can build platforms, not just for one, but for others? It shouldn't be, I know someone, and that's how I get it done. It should be, this is how it's done, and let's make it happen. So what would be your recommendations for me to get this moving at my own institution?
Yeah, I mean, Chita, that's a great, that's a great, that's a great comment. And one of the things that I hear from CMOs and CQOs is really a couple of things. One is the, they view networks as a way of expanding the capacity for them to get their job done. So they're responsible for improving outcomes across the board. And when, when, when very, individuals from various divisions across the hospital are participating in, in networks, that actually increases capacity. The challenge for them is there can't, it's hard to think about this from the perspective of one network for every condition. And so what I hear from them is the, in some ways, the mirror image of what you just said. Is there a way in which the, the people across divisions, or even within a division, can start to spread their wings a little bit and, and, and spread what they've learned out more to get greater efficiency and more impact from what's going on? And the hope, you know, the larger hope is that as the world starts to change, and, you know, I'm looking for, Amy's talk in a few minutes is going to be related to this. As the world starts to change, as, as the country continues to move towards value-based care and recognizing that physicians, that we have to do a better job aligning the finances for the healthcare system with the, the work that we actually do, the non-visit-based work as well as the visit-based work, that this will start to be easier. And so my hope is that we all start, and really, the point of the, the presentation today was to encourage everyone to start thinking, Chita, in the, thinking and acting in the way that you're talking about. Because I think, I think there'll be greater receptivity. And in fact, the networks could be viewed as, as the catalyst for some of the change that, that health systems are going to have to and want to make. So it's a little bit of a vague answer, other than, you know, just like, get together. We need to get together at a, at a local level. Just, well, oh, great.
Oh, I was gonna say, you can, if you have something more.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, it might be kind of hard to do, but, to answer this question. But thinking about what are the limits of this system? You know, within any one specialty, we treat multiple different diagnoses. And some are very, very rare. How can we think about capturing and delivering this model to all patients without sort of super-specializing the delivery of, of each network?
Yeah, Essie, I think that's a great question. And, and this came up in the design session where there was a discussion about not just, in many ways, we've thought about this as isolated networks. And one could start to think about this work as networking as a way of solving problems. So perhaps there aren't longstanding networks. But when we have So perhaps there aren't longstanding networks, but when we have a problem or when we want to learn something, we come together in a collaborative way to actually tackle the problem. And that, that starts to open up opportunities for all kinds of things around the hospital. I mean, billing people and, you know, people interested in billing can start to work together to solve and learn from the variation, variation across our sites. So I think the core skills that people are, that we're all learning as part of this, the, the ways in which we start to lead, the ways in which we encourage individuals at the frontline to keep innovating, to actually, to surface their ideas and to share them with others. And then really soon, I think we're going to see more and more technology that allows us to do this work with less friction. We're starting to see this across networks with more networks on the same platform. It becomes easier to go see what everybody else is doing by, and leveraging AI on the platform is before we do any PDSA, we ought to ask, has anybody else ever solved this, tried to solve this problem? And we take a look to do that. We see that now with deep research in Gemini and ChatGPT. You know, before, before we do research, we should, it's getting easier to do a systematic review to look at, look for other examples.
Hi there. Great talk. I was curious if there are any institutions that have sort of a hub that help individuals within quality improvement roles within divisions, connect with others at institutions to help leverage what the learnings have already been and learn what other learning networks exist. Cause I don't know that I know all of the learning networks that are in existence today.
Yeah, that's a great, so you're, you're asking does, does any, I, I know of institutions who have internal hubs. So like CHOP, Dan Hyman, when he was Chief Quality Officer at CHOP, tended to run his program so that he was networking the people within CHOP who were part of networks. But it sounds like you're talking about, is anybody doing that across networks? Across, is that right?
Yeah, either across networks or either internally within institutions.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think that's the, that's the opportunity for all of us right now. That perhaps there's enough value in doing things together that it's time to start to organize in that way. And for me, you know, the validation, even though we didn't get a hundred million dollars, which would have made it a heck of a lot easier for all of us to have networked. What we suggested in the, in the, in the MacArthur proposal was just that. And, you know, so I, 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 the opportunity now, and what we're thinking about now is how we bring the networks, how, how we start to get a little bit more organized because there are opportunities now as being part of this Bold Solutions Network. And now another sponsor who's come forward for us to start to work together and to, for this work to be presented holistically to people who want to make a difference in the world. So I think we're right at that moment right now and, and, you know, so if you've got energy, if anybody's got energy to get involved in that, like, you know, reach out, let's start talking.
Do we have any questions from online?
I, I see a comment from my colleague Shazad Said, who's the Clinical Director of Improved Care Now, who, Shazad, you may actually want to make a comment here if you can come off mute. I don't know. I know you think about these things.
Yes. So thank, thank you, Peter, for the presentation and, and Essie for organizing this. This is really helpful and, and great work. So in, in addition to, in, in response to the first question about, you know, where to go for, what are the, what are the needs? And, and how we can leverage networks for improvement? I think the opportunity is really our economy of scales where sharing of resources, sharing of expertise, and really from an institution perspective, sharing of cost between different networks becomes a imperative for the CMOs, the CQOs to think about and facilitating these kind of participations. And in response to the last question, I think the, the first place oftentimes is to approach your CQO, the Chief Quality Officer of your institution, who should serve as a facilitator for connecting people within the institution and hopefully across institutions that who are some expertise in quality and safety work where you can connect and, and learn from them. And also gain expertise and make network connections. You know, the days of single center studies to impact outcomes are long gone. It is all about team science and it's all about collaborating to solve problems which are being faced by every institution in different shape and forms. So this is the, the best way to problem solve those problems. And that's the, the CMO or the Chief Quality Officer should be one of those few initial reach outs to help facilitate that. And they should be able to connect people across different networks and different learning health systems to facilitate learnings and collaborations.
You, you know, the one, the one other comment I would just make here is that we're in a, we, we are all aware of how, how much the environment is shifting around us. And I think it's, so although at some level, I'm not giving a specific answer for some of the questions. What, what I think we have to get better at doing is to view changing environments as an opportunity to build on what we've done before. And, you know, I, I hope, I, I certainly am getting a sense that the environment is qualitatively different and actually in the direction of the work that we've all been doing. And so at, at the very least, that gives us hope to just keep going and keep slogging away on a day by day basis and facing the various challenges at a, at a slightly larger level. You know, there's, I, I think if we do, I, I do have a degree of hope that if we keep going in this direction, we're, we're gonna be, we're going to be positioned well as the environment continues to shift.
And just as a quick time check, we have about five minutes remaining. So if you are lingering on a question, now is a great time to start to put it into the chat or raise your hand here. Otherwise, one of the things that I guess I was wondering, this is Eric Fredrickson, the Quality Improvement Specialist with PR Coin. One of the things that I have been wondering for quite some time. We had mentioned the Chief Medical Officer and Quality Officer a couple of times. Are there those additional venues or other environments to sort of get the word out for learning health networks? One of the biggest barriers I think we see from a functional standpoint is many institutions not wanting to engage in data sharing. And yet that's foundational to something like learning health network. So how do we make that so that's an easier argument for networks to join? Because it is a purposeful effort and not have to recreate the wheel with every institution in that regard.
Yeah, I mean, Eric, that's a great question. I just, I, two comments and then maybe I'll, I'll introduce Amy. One is that what you're describing, at least so far in our experience, is, continues to be, we're, we're not exactly succeeding. We, we have been trying to, what we are trying to test are umbrella agreements that make it easier for hospitals to sign once and then have additional, join additional networks. Just yesterday, my colleague Keith Porcaro, who works on this with me, who's a, he's a law professor at Duke, interested in multi-site data sharing. Apparently there are some new AI-driven software tools that help to take some of the, the dead space out of the contracting process. So there are new tools on the horizon. And, you know, this is clearly a friction point. And as we're more connected to policy folks, I think it's something for us to keep our eye on as something to, to really work on. Because it is, it is too hard. The, the other thing that I will mention is that, and interesting, one of the newer networks is focused on people living with bipolar disorder. And in the field of psychiatry, there's suddenly, in the last six months, there have been three articles written about why there need to be more learning health networks in, in psychiatry. So the word is actually starting to get out and, and people who are not currently participating are starting to see this as something that's important for them to do and to publicly call for it. So again, something that I think provides us with a degree of hope. And maybe on that note, I'll, I'll, on the note of give things that give us a, a degree of hope, let, let me just introduce Amy Basano, who in true networking form, I got to know through a mutual colleague who said, you know, if you, if you really want to address something that's been on your mind, which the issue of how, how to, how do we get financial alignment and payment systems aligned with what we're trying to do? You really need to talk to Amy Basano. So Amy is currently at Health Management Associates. She has more than 20 years of experience in design, in the strategy and the design and the implementation of payment systems that drive change in the healthcare delivery system. She was Managing Director of Medicare Services and Deputy Director of the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Innovation at CMS. She's been involved in developing and implementing value-based purchasing models. And really vast experience within the federal government, including at the Office of Management and Budget, which actually certifies many of the payment models. So Amy has been working with us in the bipolar disorder, Amy and her team, around payment models for chronic care conditions, in particular, people with mental health conditions. And, you know, really excited to have her talk today about some of the, some of what's taking place in the environment and some of the, some of the opportunities that might exist for us. So Amy, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. Now, this is going to be the trickiest part as I try and figure out how to share these slides. I think that should do it. Do you see, can you see what I'm sharing there? Is that, Peter, you got that?
Yes, we can. We can in the room. Can we get a quick thumbs up for virtual, other virtual attendees? Yep, we're all good. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Peter, for the introduction. I am going to talk a little bit today about value-based care. I'll give a little bit of a background and sort of a status of where things are at. And then try and think also a little bit about what it looks like in the pediatric space and some of the particular challenges there. And then happy to take questions at the end. And so there's a lot here. My slides are a, a little dense, but I want you to have them as a reference. And so I won't, we'll just tie and hit the highlights, given the, the time we have available. So, I mean, the question is like, what is value-based payment, value-based care, value-based contracting, value-based purchasing, alternative models? You hear a lot about this. It sort of means a lot of things to a lot of different people. So, you know, ultimately it's, you know, paying differently for care. We've been in this fee-for-service system for many years, many decades. And the incentives really were not aligning for the sort of outcomes we want. And whether it be in pediatrics and as Peter mentioned, in the behavioral health space, primary care, the healthcare system's not working. And so, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, sort of tried to think about moving this differently and sort of paying differently. If, if the payment was the issue and it wasn't creating the right incentives, if you pay providers differently, if you sort of incentivize things differently, the people who are delivering the care will change their behavior. They won't be as incentivized as of giving more services. They'd be looking better at outcomes and quality, you know, supporting the triple aim. And I say, you know, we're going to come back to this slide in, or variations of the slide in a minute, sort of talk about, is this the right way of thinking about it? But, you know, this is sort of where value-based care is coming from. So then what does that mean exactly? So like, why now? And sort of I sort of started to allude to this of, you know, the, the healthcare system is unsustainable. Healthcare costs keep rising. It's both a systemic, meaning, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, but from as employer-sponsored insurance or, you know, the premiums we all pay, the access we pay, you know, the, not just the premiums, the co-insurance. There's a lot of issues that just make it really difficult. And there's this, this urgency for savings, which is nothing new. But it's sort of, when you put all of these things together, you know, the, the demographics, the patient population is increasing, aging. There's workforce shortages. The technology, we're at sort of at a better time, you know, there's ability to do repeat, remote patient monitoring. Peter mentioned AI, you know, there's just more interventions available, you know, what does this look like? And, you know, where, where are we using the technology in the right ways? Again, are those incentives in a fee-for-service environment aligning in to get to the best particular outcomes? You know, the politics of things is always driving and sort of Congress has, you know, had a say in this. It was created the Innovation Center as part of the Affordable Care Act, looking for Medicare and Medicaid to be leaders in alternative approaches and, and value-based care. And, and, you know, I think the, the, we'll talk in a minute, but I think the, the message on that, the success has been mixed. And then, you know, this slide is something I've been using since predating the current focus on wellness and prevention. But it has, it is definitely a way to try and, in value-based care, that is, is a way to incentivize the wellness and prevention. Because it's not, you know, those are things that are important. And if the system is really paying for the, you know, sick care, you know, why, why are we not investing in preventive services? Screening services, other sorts of wellness, you know, other incentives to keep people healthy. And so all of these have really come together over the last decade plus to try and get to a place where this would be the sort of dominant form of paying for services. As I said, the sort of messages or the results have been somewhat mixed. It is really hard to move off of the fee-for-service. And there's been a lot of effort to get both the payers and the providers to buy into this. But, you know, fee-for-service is what works, what people are used to living in. But also further, the value-based care models are built off of a fee-for-service chassis. And so if you're still paying more for interventional services than preventive services, has, you know, how, is it taking off? Is it going to work? In terms of what does that mean of like fee-for-service, what would the alternative be? You know, is sort of a capitated or risk-based contract where you're looking at the total cost of care? Whether that is for an episode of, you know, someone has been hospitalized and the care for the hospitalization plus their recovery 30, 60, 90 days, or at a broader population level or, you know, at a total cost of care for what does any individual need over the course of a year? And so the, these arrangements are, we, you know, look at what maybe the historical costs are for serving a patient like that. And then reconciling on the backend of like, well, what did the actual cost come to be? And you as an entity, a hospital system, provider group, some third party are willing to go on risk for that and say, I can do it better than whatever the historical cost is. But if I do it worse, that means I'm held accountable. And so there's been up and down on trends on this because you can imagine that there's a lot of things of like, well, what is the right historical amount? What about, you know, risk-adjusted? You know, my patients may not look the same. What about, you know, risk-adjusted? You know, my patients may not look the same as what you're looking at historically. And so that is sort of trying to move people off of the, the fee-for-service. And sort of to that point, like, how do you design these models fairly, accurately, look at the right populations included in them, you know, a Medicare uh, model, value-based care arrangement is going to be very different than something in Medicaid versus a you know, employer-sponsored one where they have a much more, you know, potentially diverse population they're trying to cover. And so when do you, you know, start it? When do you end it? You know, what are the, the payment rates? And so we collectively are still refining and doing that. And from my Innovation Center experience, you know, there were lots of sort of generations of models. You learn something, you move forward, but also underlying that the, you know, healthcare system is also rapidly changing about, you know, what the, back to my technology point, what's available. You know, we did things in the oncology space and, you know, the oncology is moving so quickly that you want to make sure you're really incorporating new technology and incentivizing the state-of-the-art care and not what would have been, you know, in place five or six years ago. Also, when you're trying to reconcile at risk or thinking about these things, like, you have to have a reasonable period to measure their performance because people wanna know what's been happening. But incentives on disease prevention, um, wellness prevention, those returns on investment take a long time to be seen. And so how do you continue to incentivize those things? If people are not going to be rewarded for, you know, higher use of any, you know, screening services or, or other preventive uh, services. Patient incentives also may not be aligned, you know, further, you know, ca- you know, cost-sharing that goes along with those preventive services. You want to make sure the patients are financially bought into this and that it's serving them well and that encouraging them to see their healthcare team to get those services. And so again, things that have not really been completely uh, worked through. And then, um, you know, quality, how do you measure the quality? To, to my earlier slide, value-based care is in, uh, is there an equation of, you know, both the financial side, but the quality side and quality metrics overall are not always best um, uh, ref- you know, really reflect the sort of outcomes or the, the services that you're trying to deliver. And then, you know, you don't wanna be overly burdensome, or if it's so broad, then it's really meaningless. And then the question of like primary care versus specialist, you know, so much of this folks focuses on primary care, but you know, the specialist is the one who deliver the really expensive services and are treating the, the sicker patients, but how do you encourage them to bring in as, as well? And so not to be like so negative on that because the, the universe, the landscape has really changed considerably, but it's an incremental uh, movement. And this, uh, now that we're ten plus years into it, this is a slightly different version of the slide I showed you earlier, where if you think about it, it's not so much the payment reform, but think of it as relationship reform because it's not just providers are not always incentivized just by financial issues. There's other things besides that. Also, patients are also incentivized or need things beyond just you know, a financial issue, you know, we know they need uh, behavioral and social support, that those things are so integral to having successful outcomes, you know, using more, taking advantage of the technology and digital solutions. People post-COVID, people are much more comfortable with uh, asynchronous or, you know, just virtual care in general. We're all meeting today. Would this meeting have happened this way, but you know, before COVID? Um, the payment, not to underestimate that because that's still a uh, really important thing, but also removing the friction, just make things easier for people to do what is right. And so if you change those relationships, change the way people interact with each other, those are creating incentives to change the business model, to think about, you know, getting to the triple aim of the better outcomes, the better experience and the lower cost. You want this to be easier. It just doesn't, like, it's so, the system right now is so hard that like value-based care really at its potential, you know, has this opportunity to really make these things happen. And we're, and we're seeing that in a number of places, despite what I just said before, like, there is progress, but it's, you know, not perfect. It's, you know, fits and starts of things. And so then, thinking about, you know, in the pediatric space, I, I, I had a very technical um chart in here that looked at like adoption of value-based care by lines of business. And I took it out because it was just too busy and too maybe uninteresting, but I wanna touch on what the point of that though is, there's this thing called the Healthcare Learning and Action Network, and they are sort of a facilitated by CMS, but it's really a multi-stakeholder uh, group that comes together, that's committed to value-based care. And one of their um, most important things or most uh, high-profile things that they do is measure the adoption rates of value-based care. And, you know, by lines of business. And so Medicare is the highest, you know, still maybe fifty percent or so. But in after they've been at it for, you know, fifteen plus years, because they have the resources, they have the opportunities to stand up these models, to encourage, you know, use the Medicare carrots and sticks to build in value-based care. Medicare Advantage commercial is sort of in the middle and Medicaid is at the bottom, and especially with pediatric communities. The um, you know, Medicaid is trying to get into this, but has some difficulties. They're trying to incentivize their managed care organizations to build in value-based care, but it's still not achieving the same um, opportunities as others are, um, other um payers are, are getting there. And so as I was preparing for this, thinking a little bit about why hasn't it taken off in the same way as, you know, for pediatric populations, not just Medicaid, but pediatric in general, you know, it's, it feels easier to think about doing an interv- a cardiac intervention because the patients are expensive and have a lot of other costs. So if you do something, if you keep them out of a nursing home for a few days, that's a lot of savings that you already have achieved. And so when you look at the Medicare population, sort of you can look, you know, see where those incentives may be aligning and where there can be some um, opportunities for to, to want to go in there and to have a quicker return on investment. Children and you all know this, you know, their healthcare needs change as they grow. Very, you know, infants are very different than teenagers. And so if you're looking at a population, how are you going, you know, the issues I talked about earlier? How are you going to um, uh, measure the right outcomes? How are you going to be looking at the right things? And if you have this very essentially diverse and also generally healthy population to manage, you know, are those incentives, is that, what, what do you need to do differently to achieve the financial returns on the investment, given the, the, they're healthy and also relatively inexpensive compared to, you know, where a Medicare beneficiary may be on their total cost of care of, you know, eight, ten thousand dollars at, on average, or potentially more per year. There's also diverse population, you know, the um, children, I just was reading this last night, that children of color are more than fifty percent of the P, the, you know, under eighteen population. There's also children have high rates of poverty, um, which are, are horrible things. And definitely as a society, we should be working to address poverty rates and other, other things there on the surfaces. But that just makes it more difficult to um, get to those populations, bring them in for regular care. It's something even where CMS at the Innovation Center on their models and Medicare beneficiaries, we did work there where it was the wealthier, uh, you know, than average and, you know, whiter than average of the Medicare population were the ones who were in those models because they're more likely to interact with the healthcare system. So finding the patients to bring them in and have them uh, do what needs to be done makes it more difficult. There's also, you can't look at children without looking at their broader community, their parents, their families, where they're living. And so all the more need for looking at, you know, taking care of the entire community, supporting those other non-healthcare needs that really drive um, some of these costs about getting people uh, in for their preventive services. And other, you know, what they, what else they need. And so it's sort of spot, you know, concentric circles out of how to, to look at the population in a value-based care. And so just thinking about those topics about what I said earlier, you know, there's designing a model around that is going to be very difficult. In addition, the, I wanna emphasize the quality measures as well, you know, what are the right quality measures? Are they here? Have they been developed? Have they been vetted? Again, not to keep bringing it back to Medicare, but Medicare has a lot of infrastructure that's available to really facilitate this and funding to do it. The Medicaid programs, the, you know, other insurers are not really wanting to invest here. It's sort of more of like, what can the community be doing? And, you know, are they doing that or not? So like, how are you going to measure the quality? I would say sort of on the bright side, the concept of medical homes, which my understanding is actually originated in the pediatric population, you know, really is the underpinning of many of these value-based care arrangements, especially for patients with special needs, chronic conditions, many of the patients that you are treating. If you already are in that environment, it leads to a better chance to have a model to be able to um, think about how to, you know, continue to manage their care. If you as the specialists have taken over most of their care coordination and care management. But also if they're interacting with the healthcare system more regularly, it's more opportunity to do those interventions, to provide this, you know, the supports of food or housing or transportation. So there, there are opportunities there, and I think that's where people are looking on um, you know, pediatric uh, particular models. But also, I would note there's, you know, find a way, these are things that are not done like overnight. And so there needs to be sort of pathways to value-based hu- care. And so that can look like a lot of different things of whether it means like health systems that are in value-based care for other populations can be taking those learnings and applying it in the pediatric space. Or, you know, CMS has thought about, you know, has had a pediatric model, um, uh, you know, for very specific circumstances, and it was through the states. But are there other ways they can be building out models? There's also the sort of like supply and demand. If you, there's more people who are interested in expressing that interest that can generate more supply of this. And like, you know, maybe there's just need little steps to get there, but you know, get to a place where you can have more value-based arrangements. And then the last point here and sort of, and Peter was talking about it is the, the landscape is changing. And even if you're not in um, full-risk type of environment or, you know, very sophisticated models, the CPT coding system, the pro- your payers are more recognizing the need of supporting care coordination, team-based care, you know, non-physician practitioners or others who can work under the, the, uh, the physician their supervision, you know, getting paid for those other services, behavioral health integration, other, there's many other programs that folks should be investigating to think about, you know, how can we be trying to get there? How can we be taking advantage of this? And, you know, when funding is short and, you know, really not available and time is short, you know, there's, there's things out there. And this is what Peter and I have been working on. I'm trying to look at, you know, what does that environment look like? Because the, the, the incentives are changing, but there's just a broader recognition that um, the need for these um, better, better payments and better, you know, ways to, to coordinate care. So um, thinking about this, sort of alluded to some of these things, but you know, when you look at stakeholders, you know, what are some of the lessons or if anyone wants to try and, you know, really generate that demand for more value-based care, more opportunities to do it, you know, this is not a no one does this on their own. This is not something that someone can do sort of off the side of their desk or on weekends. Like, this is, you know, change is hard, change is big. And so really looking at what is the key issue? Where, what is the biggest problem? And everyone may have a different answer to that, and that's okay. It's just more of like establishing what is the, what do you want to do? Where are the incentives not aligned right now? And then how can you build something else from that? Organizations create these opportunities, but it does need somebody to own it. Individuals can drive the change, you know, this is requires um, commitment from senior leadership of an organization. But people can be in- invested in this at all levels because this is very um, trans- any of these are done well or transformational. They need clinical change. They need technology change. They need revenue cycle change, you know. There's sort of administrative change. And so it's a team, but you know, it's, it's not, uh, it shouldn't feel like it's not doable. It's not possible. You know, and then multi-stakeholder really, you know, who, everyone should be involved in this and you know, it takes time, it takes trust and transparency, you know, you need to, people need to feel that the, everyone is in this together, like anything, any change management. These are all things that, you know, you've heard before and have thought about before. But then I think this last one, uh, you know, about the market circumstances, it is very market-sensitive. I spent time talking about Medicare and then how pediatrics is different, but also geographic markets. There are lots of different ways, people who've been the innovators versus the lagers and where people have come in on things, you know, just a, an anecdote or a bit of fact from some of the innovative, sorry, from the Innovation Center models, the um, there is a consistent uh, result that show that physician-led projects are more successful than hospital-led uh, programs. And so there's, you know, lots of reasons why that may be. But, you know, it's also looking at, you know, where people are most invested in doing this and where they see the opportunities because you can't start this just everywhere on everything. And so look, being very thoughtful about where, you know, the market or the geography or the clinical area is most ripe. And then those lessons can spread and diffuse and of, as others, you know, picks up steam and others come on board. And um, you know, there, there's opportunities there and, you know, it is challenged, but you know, there's, it's been very successful, you know, the the story I like to tell, it's again, not necessarily completely relevant to this group, but it's very clear um, uh, that the, um, when CMS did their first mandatory model in hip replacements, you know, the incentive was to keep people out of nursing homes. And it was only in about forty percent of the country. But within one year, the change happened that people were getting home-based care regardless of whether they were in the model or not. So these incentives change and people are successful on that. You know, there's lots of different ways you can be doing, um, you know, ways to approach this. And you know, there's, there's, it's a, it is the future. There are great opportunities. And then um, just leaving you with this last slide, you know, change is coming. We sort of like this quote from Bill Gates, we will always estimate the change that will occur in the next two years and underestimate the change that occurs in the next ten. So like, don't think it's going to stay the same. Don't think that it's not going to matter because when you look back on the ten, you know, the past ten years, lots of things have um, happened and, you know, you want to be part of the, the, the new opportunities to really improve the care and improve the, the delivery of the services for your patients. And so I know we sort of have just a few minutes, but with that, I know we went fast. I'm sorry for talking so fast. Um, happy to answer some questions in the last few minutes.
Feel free to raise your hand here in the room. Oh, yeah. You have a good thought. Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, I think we had uh, Dr. Gilbert, Alika Gilbert.
Guess I can't start video. Um, so that was a wonderful presentation and wonderful job outlining the complexity, the complex uh, system that we have and how it's gonna be a huge challenge to get to this what could be a dream state of value-based care, but you know, the bumps in the road along the way that it will take. So one concern that I have, and you talked about um, one of the challenges is that um, the risk assessment in cer- for certain hospitals or care practices that take care of maybe higher risk or underserved populations and the effect that that has on the value-based care. I worry about, you know, safety net hospitals, practices in this process as we work to evolve to this place of value-based care. And um, and with this, the, the pathway we have to the, the pathway we have to get to value-based care, oftentimes when you have a complex system, they implement change in steps, right? And so like, like the easier challenges or, I don't know, the easier steps get done first. But how do we make sure that like safety net hospitals or, or places that take care of underserved populations aren't penalized in that process while when we, as we try to get to the, the dream state of value-based care? And then my second question is, do you think, you know, there's so many other things that affect healthcare that you also alluded to, like those social drivers? Like, are we even close to a place where we're going to be real about the effect of those social drivers on healthcare? And be able to transition to a way that we're addressing those problems to also be able to, to do value-based care truly in the way that it needs to be done?
Yeah, so a lot there. Amazing questions. I'll quickly answer. I think we are there or very close to being there on recognizing the social drivers. We don't have a good answer or a consistent answer because there's, the costs are significant and there's lots of debate about whether or not, how much of that should the healthcare system be paying for that directly versus, you know, more, just a better social safety net for that? And so I think that's a, a very much an ongoing conversation, a vigorous conversation right now. And we've come far in that in the past five or six years. So I think I'm cautiously optimistic there, whether it's ever, probably won't be perfect, but I think we're getting to a better place than we have been. And CMS just is sort of, they're calling it now upstream drivers or health, and they're really trying to recognize those costs for, you know, for, in the healthcare system. On your first question about safety net providers, I think there's a recognition that, you know, we collectively want safety net providers in these alternate, these payment approaches, but that they are special considerations on thinking about how to sort of approach them, how to establish fair payments, how to create the right incentives, how to recognize, you know, the unique patient population and the needs of those patients that they provide compared to, you know, the, you know, community hospital, suburban community hospital that may be serving a very different population. So I think that is where the sort of model design is evolving, but there is a recognition there, that there is there. I would say not the safety net hospitals so much, but the FQHCs, they have been pretty progressive and have done a lot of work in this space and are having some really good results and sort of state associations are building up more models there. So I think there's an interesting, like case study to look at how they have approached it. But I think I'm, I'm over time. I'm sorry. I'm always happy to talk, I can talk more of you offline if you ever want to reach out.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I, I think that there might be a few more questions online, Amy. So I'm hopeful that you might be willing to stick around and maybe put some answers into the chat while we move on, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay, wonderful. Well, I would like to, first off, thank Amy for coming. Maybe we can do another round of applause. All right. And we are going to now transition to our Frontiers in Pediatric Special Issue panel presentations. And we welcome Dr. Erikan Demirkaya, professor at Western University in Ontario, Canada, and Frontiers in Pediatric Specialty Chief Editor for the Pediatric Rheumatology Journal, who will provide some introductory remarks leading us into the special session. So, Dr. Demirkaya.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm sorry, I am on holiday with my family. And I really wish to be there. And welcome to the Frontier sponsored special panel presentation, Building a Learning Health System in Pediatrics. It is truly a pleasure to open this important meeting today. Though unfortunately, as I mentioned, that I am joining you virtually, I very much wish to, I could be in Seattle in person for this great event. And to explore the impact of learning health systems in pediatric rheumatology, our guest editors, with the support of Frontiers Pediatrics, launched a call for a special research topic on building a learning health system in pediatric rheumatology. Their goal was to highlight real-world clinical practice and network-based interventions that improve the quality of healthcare delivery and outcomes in our field. The special issue stands as a testament to the power of adapting the LHS model in transforming care for children with chronic diseases. On behalf of Frontiers in Pediatrics, we are delighted to support this session, which builds on the success and strong interest in the special issue. Today, the collection has been received more than 22,000 views and nearly 6,000 downloads, a clear reflection of its significance for the journal, for open access science, and for the wider pediatric rheumatology community. With that, I am pleased to now turn things over to our special topic editors, who will be moderating today's session. Thank you once again for being here and welcome to the PR Coin special webinar. Thank you so much for the kind invitation again.
Hello, everyone again. We're delighted to moderate this panel of talks from the special issue on, and ebook, Building a Learning Health System in Pediatric Rheumatology. And thank you, Dr. Demirkaya, for coming from your vacation to introduce us in such a kind way and for Frontiers in Pediatrics for sponsoring this special webinar. I'm Essie Morgan, Division Head of Rheumatology at Seattle Children's, researcher at Seattle Children's Research Institute and professor at University of Washington, here with two co-editors of the issue. I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Good morning. My name is Shitha Alvora. I'm a pediatric rheumatologist in Charlotte, North Carolina at Atrium Health Levine Children's, and I'm happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Beth Gottlieb, and I am pediatric rheumatologist at Cohen Children's Medical Center, part of Northwell Health Hofstra Medical School. It's great to be here.
Great. And with that wonderful setup from Dr. Demirkaya, we can actually probably jump right into things. He gave the rationale behind the issue, really highlighting what a learning health system could do in pediatric rheumatology and what examples there are from the community and the network of this work. So actually, before I go on, we do have a fourth co-editor, Constance Mara from Cincinnati Children's, who's, who's not here today. But we, it was a real pleasure to serve as special editors for this edition. So today, we're going to highlight seven different talks. And there'll be five minutes, up to five minutes for each presentation with about two minutes for each question. Our first speaker I'll invite up is Dr. Julia Harris. She's Professor of Pediatrics at Children's Mercy Kansas City, where she serves as the Associate Chief Quality Officer. Dr. Harris?
Okay, hopefully you can hear me now. Okay. I wanted to first acknowledge all of the co-authors on this manuscript, which are listed here. The Pediatric Rheumatology Care and Outcomes Improvement Network, or PR Coin, is a North American learning health network that launched in 2011. The current focus of the network is to improve outcomes in patients with juvenile idiopathic arthritis, or JIA. JIA is a chronic autoimmune disease causing persistent joint inflammation. And PR Coin has a shared patient registry to track quality measures. This manuscript highlighted network performance on six disease activity outcome measures. At the time of this publication, there were 23 sites from academic pediatric medical centers in PR Coin with over 7,200 active patients with JIA. There are many network-wide interventions or interventional themes, including utilizing quality improvement tools, performing pre-visit planning, doing shared decision-making, providing self-management support, doing population health management, utilizing a treat-to-target approach to care, and having parent and patient engagement. These are the six disease activity outcome measures that are highlighted in the manuscript. And data are displayed on run and control charts. And we use standard rules to assess for special cause or improvement in our performance. Our figure one here is of our key driver diagram. With our aim at the left, our primary or key drivers there in the middle and potential interventions, some of which I already highlighted on the right. For our results, we had five disease activity outcome measures show improvement over time. One of the measures inactive or low disease activity by CJ-10 by six months post-diagnosis did not significantly improve with variability in the data ranging from 30 to 80%. This is a control chart highlighting one of our measures that improved, the inactive or low disease activity by CJ-10. And this is a control chart with a date at the bottom and most recent date at the far left. And then our percent of patients meeting this measure at the, on the Y-axis. Hopefully you can appreciate the significant change or improvement in our center line over time, starting at 71% in 2012 to 2013, and now at 81%. Our second measure I wanted to highlight was the clinical inactive disease by American College of Rheumatology Provisional Criteria, where we saw an increase from 46% with shifts in our data and a final collaborative performance of 60%. These are our three additional disease activity outcome measures that improved. I did want to note that all of these have a desired direction of going down. For mean CJ-10 score, our collaborative network improved from 4.3 to 2.6. For mean active joint count, the mean was 1.5 in 2011 to mid-2013. And this significantly decreased over the years with our current center line at 0.7. And then lastly, the mean physician global assessment of disease activity score significantly improved from 1 to 0.6. So PR Coin has made significant improvements in the network's disease activity outcome measures for patients with JIA. PR Coin's structure, focus on transparency, sharing of best practices, use of QI methodology, and both network and site interventions have all contributed to these improvements. This manuscript highlighted the first report of performance on outcome measures for JIA over time in a quality improvement learning network. And direct comparison to other JIA cohorts is challenging. So in conclusion, PR Coin will continue to live out its mission of using QI science to deliver exceptional and equitable healthcare to children with JIA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. Are there any questions in the room or online? While we're waiting for that, I have a question for you. We just heard a quote from Bill Gates that Amy Bassano shared about, "We always overestimate the change that will occur in the next two years and underestimate the change that will occur in the next 10." I wonder if you have any thoughts about that quote and maybe how you see the trajectory of change in the future for this network?
Yeah, I, I like that quote, especially when you are monitoring data frequently. Sometimes you can get discouraged when month by month, you feel like there's no change or very subtle change. Obviously, quality improvement is never-ending, right? There is always something to do. We are always making iterative changes. And I think that's where PR Coin really sticks to its foundation and mission of we keep moving on, we keep progressing, we try to share best practices, we try to work through barriers. And I think this manuscript is telling that when you look over the last decade, we have made significant improvements in our outcomes. And if we keep plugging along and, you know, showing up and doing the work, that collectively, you know, we can make a big difference.
Great answer. Any other questions in the room before we advance? Oh, Dr. Shishov, do you want to come off mute?
Hear me? Okay?
Yes, please.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Great talk, Julia. My, my only question, not to, not to highlight this, I missed the one measure that did not improve. And if you could comment on why you think it didn't improve while the other five did?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the disease activity measure that did not improve was the inactive or low disease activity by CJ-10 by six months post-diagnosis. And I do feel like data quality probably factored into there, meaning we need to get our patients into the registry at time of diagnosis. And so I think it was somewhat related to lower denominators in reflecting that, that data. Again, the range of performance was 30% to 80%. So I think the wide variability kind of reflected our lower denominators for that measure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I guess this is kind of a related question, maybe too much statistics for me too early in the morning. But I'm curious about how you know or how you looked at, like, the population of people over time to know that the improvement wasn't just like, people got enrolled and then we treated their disease and they got better. Do you know what I mean? Like, did the relative amount of people at various stages in their disease change? I'm not sure what.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think it's hard to answer, right? So denominators are constantly changing with people coming in and out of the network, sites joining the network. I think that has to do with just a learning health collaborative and how, you know, the populations can change over time. So I don't have a great answer for you other than I think we just have to assume, you know, the population is, again, collective. We are talking about, you know, hundreds and thousands of patients. So collectively, you know, we can assume that the interventions we're doing are actually improving outcomes of care.
And like you said, by sampling frequently and over long periods of time, you get that sort of.
Correct, correct.
Make sure you're not going back to the baseline. Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Our next speaker is Ms. Carrie Ferrero. She is a JIA parent who is also the head of our engagement committee at PR Coin and a wonderful contributor. And we're excited to hear her presentation. Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi there. So we did a perspective article, the critical role of parents in a, within a learning health network. network. Fittingly, my authors, co-authors, were all PRCOIN parents. So we had Jenny from Nationwide, Anna from Seattle, and Susan and Corinne were from Texas Children's, so we kind of spread it around. If you please notice our attribution on the article, they always ask for our institution. And since we're writing as JIA parents and PRCOIN volunteers, that's how we listed ourselves. It was a group decision to come to that, and we'd like to see it more often in order to normalize parent and patient contributions. Next slide. So why this paper matters? Parents are essential partners within PRCOIN, not just advisors. The parent voice shape our measures, projects, tools, resources, are on the governance boards. The paper is unique in that it's authored entirely by parents. There's limited publications available discussing the role of parents and patients within a learning health network. Next slide. So while parent contribution is evident throughout the network and interventions, this paper focused on the key driver and interventions that explicitly call out parents, which are highlighted in yellow. The key driver engage patients and families. Then, under the interventions, it's the connect to parents and patient working groups, facilitate family input, development, improvement of care delivery, and co-production between all stakeholders. But we also then looked at the parent contributions to the interventions and drivers highlighted in orange in the slide, and I'm not going to list them all, but you can see them. Next slide. So the paper dives deeper into how parents contributed to the development of quality measures, co-produced self-management support materials, created tools and resources to assist families and patients, co-produced and updated medication choice cards. We were voting members of the consensus conference to standardize treatment plans. We co-produced treat-to-target tools, and we presented at learning sessions. You know, it looked at all of the ways we contributed and how that contribution influenced the end products. Next slide. So we hope the takeaway from the article is that parents are true partners in PRCOIN, our contributions are embedded across measures, tools, governance, as I said. PRCOIN provides an excellent model for meaningful parent-patient engagement in the learning health network. We hope the article shows other networks how vital parents or patients are to a successful learning health network, and how much we can help improve outcomes, because nobody knows what the parents and patients need as much as the parents and patients. Thank you.
Really fantastic work. Thank you so much, Carrie, for bringing that to light. Do we have any questions in the room here or online? Please feel free to come off mute or type it in the chat. Carrie, I'll say, just from personal experience with PRCOIN as a center and one of the leaders of the network, that parent involvement has just been essential. And really, at the heart of what we do at PRCOIN, parents are at the center and patients. If you had a wish to be granted on how the impact of what you've done could reach more kids, what would that wish be? Or maybe how do you think that wish could be answered? What could we do as a network? What could other centers do to get these tools into the hands of more families?
So the tools we created with parent input were created because we believe families need them. We've heard families ask for them. Ideally, we'd find a way to get them into the family's hands, since that's why they were created. But as far as the learning health network in general, I'd like to see more local contributions. You can see how we've impacted the network level. We can do the same thing to help with the centers and help improve the quality improvement process and outcomes locally. And then we can do the same things, if allowed, in other networks, if they start involving more families as more partners instead of bringing them in after the fact to participate on a project that was designed by the providers and decided by providers that that's the project that was needed, instead of getting input from the beginning on what would be most impactful for families.
Thank you. I also think about the shared commitment we were hearing about with the National Academy of Medicine, and a shared commitment to either incentivize people to distribute these materials to reach the outcomes. And just thinking as a network, how we could potentially have more process measures around getting these into the hands and really going with our self-management support, et cetera. So just really appreciate, again, your article and highlighting all that you're doing. It's been really phenomenal contribution. We have another question here in just a moment.
Carrie, this was fabulous, and the other parents who were involved, and the parents that are here today. Being on calls with other parents, and I would love to later talk with some of the parents here, what is the special sauce, the secret, of why particular parents get involved? What do they need? What are the factors or qualities that make a family or a parent become involved in the parent working group? That would be very helpful, so that we can advertise, kind of like, what are the attributes of being on a certain committee? What would be the attributes and needs and wants that would make a successful parent to be involved with PRCOIN?
You can come tomorrow. We have a whole panel on that.
Great answer.
I want to say that this was a learning curve for all of us. This was our first article we produced as parents. We've participated in articles as proofreading and providing some input, but we've never published something ourselves before. So it was a learning curve for all of us involved.
Hey, Carrie, this is Emily Smithman from UAB. I was about to kind of ask you what you just said. So I think huge congratulations for this manuscript, and I'm so impressed that all of the authors are parents. And so, A, I think it's great that you kind of set a precedent for that, what you said, the institutional affiliation, because I think that's one limitation to having more parents and patients involved in the academic process, even though it feels very silly. But then you're like, there's nothing to put in this checkbox. But I also wondered if you could comment on the process of putting together the manuscript as, from that perspective, of being a parent of a child with JIA, and what that process was like. So it sounds like you have been involved in the past, but...
So trying to decide exactly what our message wanted to be, what we wanted to get across was obviously the most important part, but the flow of the article and how to write it as a non-scientific part, you know, we weren't sharing, there was no data we were sharing. It was different as far as what we had been involved in before as well. Dr. Mara really helped with excellent feedback and helped guide us in our edits to get to the final product, to make it more readable and flow better for everybody and get our message across. I saw a hand up for a second.
Oh, is there someone online who wants to come off mute? Time for one more quick question. Okay, well, thank you for that presentation and for your work.
It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Shid Alvora, who is presenting on behalf of her co-authors. So the paper is "Navigating the Path to Equitable Rheumatologic Care for Underserved Children with Quality Improvement." Shidul is a pediatric rheumatologist at the Levine Children's Hospital in Charlotte, North Carolina, where she's worked for the last 13 years. She's originally from the Bay Area of Northern California. She completed her pediatric rheumatology training at Children's Hospital in Wisconsin. Oh, sorry, yes, in Wisconsin. She is very passionate about QI, and she serves as Director of Quality Improvement for the Pediatric Specialty Center and Assistant Director for the Center for Advancing Pediatric Excellence in the Department of Pediatrics. In this role, she supports residency curriculum, QI training, and the QI initiatives for Levine Children's Hospital. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Beth. So I'm very happy to be here this morning. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share our work on behalf of my team, who I'm thrilled about and couldn't love more. So our title of our talk is "Navigating the Path to Equitable Rheumatologic Care for Underserved Children with Quality Improvement." So for me, I'm always passionate about a why. I need to have a narrative. And we all know that children with rheumatic conditions are very difficult to diagnose, right? They have a myriad of symptoms, it affects multiple organ systems, and it really evolves over time. And that's what makes the diagnosis so difficult to reach. And I know the parents know this. But it's especially worse in families who are from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, given their limited resources due to financial problems, logistical nightmares, health literacy burdens, and just other family crises. Their diagnosis gets delayed exponentially, and really, their access to care is limited. So for us, that gap in care for those with limited resources is why we decided to do this project. We chose our patients really from looking at the electronic medical record and screening for those referred patients from these high-priority marginalized zip codes. And these were kids that not necessarily had come to Pete's Rheumatology, but just referred to our system. And we then identified rheumatology symptom clusters from a previous project that had helped us triage patients that needed to be seen sooner and in a more timely manner. And these rheumatology symptom clusters really were of joint pain, prolonged fever, and being ANA-positive. And so using these children that had been referred to our high-priority marginalized zip codes, along with if they had been a chief complaint or a problem of a rheumatology symptom, we then were able to determine a baseline number of those who could have actually been referred to our pediatric rheumatology clinic. And we looked at who did get referred, but more importantly, who did not. And so we looked at baseline data from 2015 to 2020, and we found that there were 2,239 qualifying children patients identified in these public health priority zip codes, marginalized zip codes with rheumatology symptoms. And of that, a little less than 2,000 of these patients had been seen in one of our four, what we call, safety net clinics. And these are clinics that are affiliated with my institution, Atrium, where children either have very limited access to resources, Medicaid, or really no insurance at all. And so of those 1929 patients, only five in those five years, which is 0.5%, it's dismal, were seen in the Atrium system by one of the pediatric rheumatologists. And at that time, we had two, and then later, we had a third. And we definitely don't know if these kids were seen by an outside pediatric rheumatologist, not in our system, but what we could control is who was seen at our clinics. And that was just five. And all five of them had a confirmed rheumatology condition, JIA, scleroderma, childhood lupus, and JDM, juvenile dermatomyositis. So this really was eye-opening for our division, and our goal then became, we wanted to increase the referrals from one safety net primary care clinic by 10%. And the second was to schedule more than 80% of these referred patients to be seen with 30 business days, which is about six weeks, between 2020 and 2021. We originally had set out with the goal of four safety net clinics, like I highlighted in the slide before, but COVID hit, and I could not have access really the way I wanted to in the other three safety net clinics. So we decided to focus on one. So how did we do this? I think we all are very familiar with the improved care model and utilization of rapid PDSA cycles, but what was really instrumental was, as we all know, having a core team and getting your stakeholders together. And that's why being involved in the clinic was so important. So the physician lead was myself, we had our resident working on this, referring providers. We actually had a nurse practitioner who was a lead at the one safety net clinic. So sometimes it can be difficult, APPs, but when you work with them, they are actually so amazing, and they really have the heart and the pulse of what's happening in these clinics. I had a QI coach and data analyst, and most importantly, families, who really helped to guide our work, who came from some of these safety net clinics and were one of the five patients that we had identified from the initial baseline data. So how did we do this? Well, strategies that we implemented included visual aids. And you can see, one of these, we're a low-resource clinic, we don't have a lot of fancy at all. So it's putting up these paper-colored visual tools in the safety net clinic with the three clusters that I mentioned, the joint pain, the fever, and the positive ANA, so that residents and APPs and physicians that were working in the safety clinic could see them when they were typing. We used keyboard reminders and smart phrases to help people really identify, ooh, it's rheumatology, I see one of these symptoms, let me type it into my note. And then even in your note, these three clusters of symptoms would pop up, and you could actually click yes or no to help identify that you marked it in your note, so that if the patient, you weren't sure if you wanted to refer right then, if the patient did come back, the next resident or physician or provider could look at your previous note and say, oh, they had this at the last one visit, now let me add to it, let's make that referral. So we used very low-budget tools. And then the other triage that I wanted to highlight was our triage pathway, which is booking with any available provider. And it basically categorized patients into various buckets or priorities. Priority one, you have attributes that really needed to be seen sooner. And within 10 business days, priority two, different attributes, and priority three. And these are not very difficult, they're very similar, and actually are seen in all of the buckets. So these are simple, hopefully, things that the general pediatrician or the provider could answer. But this, the triage, really helped my coordinating team to then identify where and when the kid needed to be seen. And that's why we developed this triage pathway. So what were our results? This first run chart really highlights the cumulative referrals to our rheumatology clinic from primary care clinic, that's that one safety net clinic. And as you can see, on the X-axis is the months, we looked at this monthly, and on the Y-axis is the amount of patients that was referred to our clinic. The upward arrow is the desired direction. We wanted more referrals to our clinic, correct, if they had these rheumatology symptoms. We wanted to be able, people for identification. And as you can see, when we first started out, we really had no referrals. And then with different interventions, as I mentioned, the project starting, introduction of this project to that clinic, and then these virtual aids that we put in their workrooms, as well as the provider lead shadowing, me going into the clinic, kind of seeing what's going on. And then we also created a patient story video that we showed to the members of the clinic, making it personal of one of the kids that had been seen in their clinic back in 2015. It really hit home, like, ooh, I know who this is. So with those interventions, we were able to shift our median, as you can see, and we didn't make our goal completely. We wanted 17 referrals in that year, which would have been about 10%. We got to 15, but we were happy, it was a win, and we're going to take it and celebrate it. So it really just shows that improved identification leads to more referrals. The last chart I'd like to show is highlighting now here, basically, priority patient scheduling. And as I mentioned, this is, we wanted the kids who were identified by our schedule coordinators, who were priority, to be seen within 30 business days or six weeks. And again, on the Y-axis, you can see it's based off around every two weeks. And you can see that initially, we had about 40 business days for our first patient, three patients that were referred, and we kind of zigzagged, but then we started to make some steady gains with those interventions that I mentioned in the previous slide. And you can see, we finally were able to get the kids into our clinic within 30 business days. So the desired direction is less, lower, and you can see, our goal was 30 business days, and we were meeting that at around 23 business days to get these kids into our clinic. So it really, I think this is it, but it really just shows you, and it confirms that doing these feedback loop kind of strategies and refining them and an awareness, along with regular cadence of meetings in these safety net clinics, really allowed us to move the needle in these safety net clinics to make sure that we did not leave this really underserved and vulnerable population from being seen and getting access to the pediatric rheumatologists. And lastly, this is just my group, they are wonderful, and I couldn't have done that with this project without them. Thank you.
Okay, that was wonderful. I think it's really impressive how you decrease the barriers, especially thinking of barriers to access in terms of language and transportation. That was pretty amazing. Are there any questions? We just really have time for one.
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks, Natalie. Of, oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Natalie, your question was, of the patients that did get referred to our clinic, the 15, how many truly had a rheumatic condition? And it was two. One was, again, a JDM, and one was a JIA. And so the other patients had other conditions that I still felt needed to be seen, just to provide some reassurance to the families, but they didn't have a true, I should say, rheumatic diagnosis that required more than two visits. I should say, rheumatic diagnosis that required more than two visits, but still essential. But that was just in one year. So I think we made a difference and prevented them from being admitted or hospitalized, right?
We have one more question. Do we have time for that? From Vidya, any data on ethnic background of patients?
Great question, Vidya. I'm gonna remember from my knowledge, but I want to say the majority of the patient, probably 80%, were Hispanic. And because of being in that more of a marginalized zip code and also our safety net clinic.
Okay, great. I'm going to introduce our next speaker, Livy Timmerman Blackman, who is Clinical Research Coordinator in the Department of Pediatrics at the University of Alabama at Birmingham and the Children's Hospital of Alabama. She currently serves as the Chair of CARIS Research Coordinator Network. If anyone's not familiar, it's the Childhood Arthritis and Rheumatology Research Alliance. She's played a key role in clinical research and advancing quality improvement initiatives in pediatric rheumatology. And she will be presenting her manuscript that highlights how EHR innovation can directly improve patient care.
And Livy sent in a video recording. So if I can get, in the first few seconds of this, someone online to just give a quick thumbs up that the audio is working and coming through.
Hi, my name is Livy Timmerman. I'm the Research Coordinator at UAB and Children's of Alabama. Our team's paper focused on how we modified our electronic health record and developed a dashboard to improve care for children with rheumatic diseases, particularly JIA patients. Like many centers, we struggled to reliably identify patients with JIA and track their disease activity. Previous methods depended on ICD-10 codes and manual chart review, which were both time consuming and often inaccurate. Without reliable data, it was difficult to monitor quality metrics or fully participate in learning health networks such as PRCOIN. To approach this issue, we modified the outpatient EHR note to include structured data elements such as active joint count, patient and physician global scores, and a simple JIA yes/no attestation checkbox. With IT collaboration, we built an external dashboard that was updated in real time, allowing our team to track these structured measures and monitor quality improvement initiatives. We used improvement science methods like PDSA cycles to refine processes and engage providers. We had great results with these changes. We achieved over 99% accuracy in identifying JIA patients. We increased documentation of treat-to-target goals from 0% to 85% of visits and CJDS-10 disease activity scores from 17% to 88%. We saw an overall reduction in average CJDS scores from 4.0 to 2.3 across our clinic populations, reflecting overall improved disease control. We also became the first non-Epic site to automate structured data transfer into the PRCOIN registry. Our project demonstrates how EHR modification and dashboards can turn routine documentation into a powerful tool for patient care, quality improvement, and research. By improving our accuracy and reducing provider burden, we advance both local outcomes for children in Alabama and national learning health system goals through PRCOIN. Thank you all very much.
That was wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any questions? I'm just gonna start with one. This is a lot of moving parts when you try and endeavor like this. You needed IT and programming, and of course, your own center. What was the biggest hurdle? How can you help the rest of us to try to think ahead and overcome that?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think that our biggest supporter was IT. So I think really finding someone who believes in the power of collecting data and the importance of it was really helpful. Finding someone who is an ally with us that could kind of help in that portion of it really made the biggest difference, because we would not have been able to do it without them.
That's amazing that you have that ally in IT. We're like, wow.
Yes, we try and bribe people with snacks. So that's, that's our idea.
Okay, I'm definitely gonna start to do that. Okay. Michael Shishov just put in a question. Do you want to come off mute?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, great. Thank you.
Yeah, so I listen intently to this because, as you guys may recall, we also have a close relationship to our CMI O Benavatia. And we presented our work, it's been a while now, but we still faithfully use the Power BI program that he, that he developed to create dashboards, but sped by our rheumatology, by our templates that we do a lot of checkboxes and so forth. So I know he's gonna ask me about this overall talk, so I took notes carefully. So I did have those four questions I put in the chat, specifically, what EMR are you using? I may have missed that. So my apologies. And with whom did you collaborate? Like with the CMI O or somebody else? Do you know the name of the program used to create the dashboard? Because we use Power BI, rather than we, but our CMI O. And then finally, does your note, ambulatory note actually feed the dashboard?
Right, yeah. So we were using all scripts, EMR at the time. Since then, we have transitioned to Epic. But thankfully, with the foundation that we had laid, was able to continue collecting similar metrics and continue with electronic data transfer into the PRCOIN registry. We just have like an IT analyst. I can definitely, if you want to send me your email, I can get in touch with you. I know that they've worked with a couple of other institutions. I'm not sure exactly the name of the program that they used. Like I said, if you'll send me your email, I can definitely get you in touch with the analyst that we work with, and he would be happy to kind of assist you with that. And then lastly, yes, our note did feed the dashboard, which was why the structured fields that we created were kind of a key portion within the process. So that the structured field is what was able to pull into the dashboard, and it updated in real time. So that was definitely a longer process of building all of those in, but made it worth it. And then, like I said, kind of enabled us to continue, once we switched medical record systems, to continue that. And also, it helped us to be able to go live with electronic data transfer into the registry.
Great. So two follow-up questions, real quick. So number one is, over what period of time are you, are you noticing this improvement that you've shared with us? And number two, how are you facilitating the data transfer from your EMR into Hive? I'm just curious about that.
Um, yes. The electronic data transfer, again, our analysts set that up. I do know that the structured fields, that was kind of the key element of being able to facilitate that. And they just kind of set up a file working with Megan with Hive that just automatically uploaded into the registry every other week. And then, I'm sorry, what was your other question?
Over what period of time did you notice this improvement in documentation?
Um, the process kind of was over a period of a couple of years. We initially started in 2021 with obtaining electronic data transfer. Eventually, we added different fields over time. But we noticed it pretty soon after going live with the dashboard. Within six months, we saw improvements. And then as we continued to track various measures and set SMART aims, we kind of improved across the board. Yes, so our new patients were viewed for inclusion automatically and uploaded EDT daily. Yes, so we set with IT various inclusion criteria to be included within what we call our JIA registry. So previously, we implemented a structured field that was a JIA yes/no checkbox. By selecting that field, it was a provider attestation during the visit. That is what included them within the registry in all scripts. Now that we've transitioned to Epic, we use a couple different ways by utilizing the JIA smartphone, either active joint count, ILR code, morning stiffness, or I think treat-to-target set is what includes them in the registry. So at least one of those have to be completed for the data to pull. And then once it goes into the PRCOIN registry, I check every other week for new patient registrations, which you will hear more about our process with that tomorrow, with Dr. Smitherman covering population management and kind of how we identify those patients, verify their inclusion, and add them to the registry.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I am just going to turn this over for the next speaker. Thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Barbara Smiley. Fatima is a pediatric rheumatologist at Anna Clinical Research Medical Director, specializing in autoimmune and rare diseases. She leads global clinical trials that advance new therapies by combining science-driven strategy, regulatory collaboration, and innovative methods. Her work integrates AI and digital health into trial design and execution, always with patients at the center to accelerate access to safer and more effective treatments. Fatima, I can't wait to hear your talk. Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much for the introduction. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, PRCOIN and Frontiers in Pediatrics for allowing for this great opportunity to share what we have with knowledge to, to all partner together. First, Julia, Livy, thank you so much. Amazing work on the JIA front. And Livy, thanks for sharing one of the great approaches for team engagement, always snacks is a good idea. For Carrie, thanks for highlighting the critical role that you, as parents, can play as partners and advocates for your child's health and everyone's health, like all the other children with autoimmune diseases. Shital, thanks for identifying those gaps. If we have the best treatments and no resources, we can deliver this to patients. And so on behalf of my colleagues, I will present this work here, that it was part of my work at Nationwide Children's Hospital before I moved to the pharma industry. And one of the thing that I, things that I would say is like, we all work together to improve those outcomes. And therefore, the focus of my presentation here would be to highlight how we link our work to the, what does it mean for everyone, for a provider, for a parent, and for the future, how we connect this with the future. I have this recorded because I wasn't sure if I would be able to attend. And fortunately, I was able to. So what we will do, we'll play it as I recorded, and then I will be available to you, answer any questions that you might have. Thank you. I don't think we can hear Eric. Perhaps you need to share the voice.
...who is struggling to live as normal. When a young person walks into a rheumatology clinic, we see more than lab result or affected organ system. We see a child or a teenager who is struggling to live as normal as possible while carrying the burden of the disease or the medications they're taking, or the invisible weight of pain. For some patients, we see lupus presenting itself as symptoms that we can see on the outside, like perhaps a rash or hair loss. But what's happening on the inside is far more dangerous. Their organs are getting affected. Their life as a whole is being affected. Childhood lupus is rare, but it's far more aggressive than adult onset lupus. We need to, in order to make sure we treat this disease effectively, we need to measure and assess its progression and activity. And we need objective measures such as SLID-2K, which stand for SLE Disease Activity Index, that assesses organ systems as a whole in an objective way. Physician Global Assessment, which reflects our clinical judgment as physicians, and also, more importantly, the child's own reported pain, their lived experience. But here's the challenge. When we began this quality improvement project at Nationwide Children's Hospital, we found that for patients who are seen for diagnosis of lupus, only one third of these visits had all three components documented. What isn't documented risks being invisible. And what's invisible is hard to treat, hard to track, and even harder to improve. That's why we created the Lupus Care Index, or LCI in short, which is a practical bundle which integrates the SLID-2K, PGA, which is Physician Global Assessment, and pain into a single bundle that unites science, clinical judgment, and the patient's experience as well, into one comprehensive picture. We, when we put this into practice, the impact was clear. We applied the IHI methodology, Institute of Healthcare Improvement methodology for quality improvement. With several PDSA cycles, the first two addressed the provider awareness and education. And that improved the documentation from 38% at baseline to 60%. However, after adding a very simple prompt, electronic health record prompt, which served as a reminder for provider to document all the Lupus Care Index items, this improvement went from 60% to above 90% and was sustained for over a year. This simple yet powerful change shows what's possible when the available tools, especially with technology, are applied and used. And as we look ahead, advances in AI and machine learning may provide even greater opportunities to support clinicians and to enhance patient care. For clinicians, this improvement means treatment decisions are grounded in comprehensive, reliable data. For patients, it means their pain, their reality, is no longer invisible. It is seen, documented, and addressed as part of their care. And it's important to emphasize that it is not just about data collection. It's about building the foundation for treat-to-target lupus care, a care that is measurable, equitable, and centered on the lives of children. I'm Fatima Barbara Smiley. And when we carried out this project, I was practicing as a pediatric rheumatologist at Nationwide Children's Hospital, caring for children with lupus and other autoimmune diseases. Today, as a Clinical Research Medical Director at Amgen, I work to bring new medications to life for people with autoimmune diseases. From the clinic to clinical research, my mission remains the same, which is to advance care and improve outcomes and shape better futures for young people with lupus and other autoimmune diseases. Thank the organizers and specialty chief editor for this opportunity to share not only our work, but our dedication to the children and families who inspire it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Looks like technology helped us in the project, but not here presenting it. We appreciate your patience here.
So I think, Dr. Barbara Smiley, I think in the interest of time, we're gonna hold on questions. And if we can, we'll take a question. And if we can, we'll take a question after we have the presentation from Dr. Vidya Sivaraman, who is next, if you don't mind, in the interest of time.
Absolutely. I'm available for later.
Okay, so our next talk is Dr. Vidya Sivaraman. She's a pediatric rheumatologist at Nationwide Children's Hospital and an associate professor of clinical pediatrics at the Ohio State University. She is the clinical lead for quality improvement in rheumatology at her site. Her interests include pediatric ANCA, associated vasculitis, scleroderma, and vaccination in children, and QI and rheumatology. She's the leader of two workgroups in CARA and a co-chair of the annual Nationwide Children's Hospital Rare Disease Day, an event for patients with rare diseases and their caregivers. So Vidya, I'm excited to hear from you, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me know if there's any audio trouble here, so I'm pleased if somebody can monitor the chat. So I am very excited today to present our work related to automated mental health screening in pediatric lupus and some associations we found with disease features and treatment. So huge thank you to the PR Coin organizers and Frontiers for organizing this session. I think it's really cool to hear what everybody's working on. Also, always wonderful to learn from each other. So I still use my motto of sharing seamlessly and stealing shamelessly. So hopefully, you might also find some things here that you could steal from us. So I have no financial disclosures relevant to this talk. You can go to the next slide. So just as a little background and the why behind this project. So childhood lupus, which you heard a little bit about in Dr. Barbara Smiley's talk, is a very complex disease. And we know this can be multi-system involvement, and these are young children affected by this disease. And we know in terms of the mental health impact, that there are higher rates of depression and anxiety in these patients with 2.9% increased odds of depression, increased odds of suicidal ideation. And it's actually higher than in adults. And so it's really important to think about how children might be impacted with this. So initial studies in adults, and then below you can see in children, 47% of children endorsed symptoms of depression. And so the references are there below, but they really have a much higher chance of mental health impact. So this is really something at the forefront of our minds when we take care of these children. You can go to the next slide. So there are some guidelines that are proposed, and these are from the American Academy of Pediatrics, Guidelines for Adolescent Depression in Primary Care, and even the U.S. Preventive Services Task Force. But within our rheumatology community, the CARA, which is our research network, Childhood Arthritis Rheumatology Research Alliance, a mental health group, put forward recommendations for at least annual screening in children with lupus, just keeping in mind this risk of mental health impact. On the next slide. So Dr. Knight and colleagues had conducted this survey within our rheumatology community. And what they found, you see on the right, that 95% of us favored screening for mental health impact every six to 12 months. And yet, on the left, only 2% routinely screen mental health. And about 7% said they screened symptomatic patients. So you can really see a huge discrepancy in what we would like to be doing and the practice. And so the conclusion was, we definitely need to increase our depression screening in these patients. The next slide. So using this guideline statement, we actually started our initial work on this a few years prior to this particular project. We presented our initial project back in 2021 with Dr. Muldaill, who was one of our fellows at the time. And so we started with a smart aim of increasing screening to 80%, just once a year initially. Started with manual identification of lupus patients in the clinic. Mainly, it was physician responsibility. It was done on paper, and there was manual transcription. Next slide. So as you can imagine, this was a fair amount of manual process, and it was only once a year. So we did feel like we could do better than that. And so again, in hearing previous talks about how things can be automated and how we can use technology, around this time, we also were very lucky to have Dr. Taxter join our group, who is our amazing informatician, who is now named Infomagician, because they can do serious magic. So she really helped us to automate this process. In the next slide. So you can see here our workflow and how that changed when we started to do this automatically. So here you will see the PHQ, which is the Pediatric Health Questionnaire, which is an accepted screening tool for depression in children 12 and older. So this screen was automatically assigned at clinic at the time of check-in for all lupus patients. The patient would then complete this electronically on a tablet. And then the score automatically gets populated directly into our note within a lupus clinic visit. So we didn't even have to go look anywhere else in a flow sheet. It was directly in our note with a score. And then I'll direct your interest to the box at the bottom. So that would actually calculate a score. And if the score was greater than 10, that's considered high risk. Or if there was any suicidal ideation that was endorsed, then there was actually a separate intrusive alert that would actually display directly on the provider's screen right when you go into the patient's chart. In addition, so the provider, right there at the time of the visit, can talk to the patient and the mental health team that we saw this alert and bring that up to the patient and put in some processes in place. At the same time, the mental health team could then develop a safety plan and develop appropriate referrals, whether it was to psychology, psychiatry, or do more acute management if there was any suicidal ideation that was in drawers. And then this was actually then screened at every single visit. So in the next slide, you will actually see some of that automation. So once the alert comes up, if the patient's score is over 10, there's an intrusive alert, which on one level shows up exactly like this box on the right, saying this patient has a high screen. And then you could say what action you actually took, if you initiated risk assessment or if psychology was already involved. And so you actually have to acknowledge this right at the beginning when you enter the patient's chart. And then on the next slide, you see what happens behind the scenes. So this is actually a silent in-basket message, which goes directly to psychology and social work. And so here you can see, they get this alert, and then they're able to follow up on it at the backend to actually be able to address that. And depending on the acuity, obviously, they would sometimes come to clinic and directly put in place a safety plan. In our next slide, you will see the next step. So again, I will go into a little bit more. This seems like serious magic, but you will see how this is implemented. On a different level, we were actually able to then correlate in this particular paper, Dr. Taxter and Lauren Harper, who was our fellow at the time, worked on this project to actually try to correlate what medications the patient was on, and then see if there were any correlations here. So I won't go into too much detail in the interest of time, but you will see that the P value was less than 0.05, significant for patients on liflunamide, for mycophenolate, and patients on steroids. So of those, you can imagine anybody on steroids, there's definite mood impact. It's also more likely that these patients are taking steroids when their disease is more active and they have maybe new disease. And so we can definitely see that this would be associated with a higher PHQ score. And then other, in terms of demographics, female gender and black or African-American race were both associated with a significant P value. So again, that really brought out to us that we should really pay attention, or these might be more marginalized groups, and we need to pay more attention to providing appropriate access to mental health support services. And then at the bottom three, oh, you can go back one, sorry. On the bottom three, you can see the patient global, provider global, which, as you know, we do for JIA also. And then the SLE 2000, which is the disease activity score that we alluded to in the previous publication. So really, in terms of their disease also, that was associated with higher PHQ scores. And the next slide. So here, this was another interesting observation that we found that back in 2017, when we were doing screening, it was mostly for patients where we actually had a concern. And that was when, you know, scores tended to be higher. But as we started to automate this process, we actually found that the median score, there was a slight drop in it. And so a little bit of a trend towards lower scores, because we also had started to actually normalize this process where patients could bring up this mental health concern beforehand so that we could address it early on. And obviously, there are some outliers, so you know, it isn't a black and white situation, but just something to keep in mind that, you know, being able to screen at every visit definitely gives these patients an opportunity to bring up these concerns. And the next slide. And so here, what we really showed, we hope we showed you, is that it is feasible to screen this high-risk population. We were able to successfully implement and increase our rate of screening. We were able to intervene in a timely manner for all of these positive results, and the details are in our manuscript. And then really provide psychosocial support. The next slide. So in terms of our next steps, we are now expanding to more disease populations. So lupus is often kind of our test subject, because they are a high-risk and high-acuity population. But now we've actually expanded to many of our other disease groups. We've also started screening for anxiety with the GAD-7 screening. And then we're also now slowly starting to explore how the PHQ scores might correlate with disease activity. And then we've had other departments also kind of partnering with us on this. And hospital-wide, some of these mental health screens are now implemented as far as at least suicidal, suicide screening. And you can go to the next slide. Okay, and this is our wonderful team. Halloween is really big here, so this was our Mario Kart year a couple of years ago. And so I really, really would acknowledge that every single member of this team, you know, comes together when we do when we do these projects, because we definitely could not do it on our own. So it's really been a huge, huge effort and a team effort. I will see if the references I would highlight, I think actually the last one that I put in is by our psychologist, Dr. Alana Goldstein-Leber, who was also a co-author in this paper. And she shows how psychology was embedded within a rheumatology clinic. So that's usually a big question that comes up with this as to how we've actually managed to do that, but she talks about that in her manuscript. So I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sivaraman. So in essence, because we have limited time, can people put their questions in the chat? And then we can definitely, you know, pass them along to the speakers. And I would like to now introduce our last speaker for this session. It's our infamous Dr. Essie Morgan. She's the Division Chief for Seattle Children's Pediatric Rheumatology and also the founding member of PR Coin with some other members in this room. And really, just the chief principal investigator who kept PR Coin together. So thank you, Essie.
Thank you for that lovely introduction. I've been introduced about three times in the same session. Hopefully, you remember me at this point, but thank you. That was lovely. So I know we're kind of over, so I'm going to go super quickly. This is some pretty complex work, for which the credit goes to Dr. Bin Wong, who wrote the article. I'm just presenting as I'm here in person, and she's on the line. And so also ask you to put any questions in the chat as we'll run out of time here. And hopefully, Bin can be answering them as I'm speaking. Our perspective article was "Digital Health Technology to Support Patient-Centered Shared Decision-Making at Point-of-Care for Juvenile Idiopathic Arthritis." And this is work that's been going on for some time with methods funding to Dr. Wong. And we have an ARC grant now to try and implement this into clinical practice. So some of the current challenges in JIA treatment, really the evidence-based guidelines we have in clinical trials really speak to the average patient. And we know that patients with JIA have very variable presentations and different responses to treatment that don't necessarily follow the average patient. So a lack of personalization of data and real-world evidence limits the ability to have informed shared decision-making. There are concerns with insurance formulary restrictions, which we can't control, but we're working on proposed solutions to some of the other problems through a digital health technology tool. And what this does is uses advanced comparative effectiveness statistical methods, Bayesian causal inference methods, to develop a patient-centered adaptive treatment strategy, PCATS. And what this does is it takes data, puts it into a model, and the more data you can have, real-world data, EMR data, enables us to identify patients like the one in front of you and that have those same type of characteristics, and learn from the data how well certain treatments worked for a patient like that and a like patient. And then that data gets taken and presented to a patient at point-of-care on a dashboard, where we can understand a bit more about how patients that are alike might respond to a certain medication. And this can inform and support shared decision-making. So the idea is that for every new patient facing a treatment decision, we can utilize data from clinical encounters in a registry. The data can come from multiple centers. Again, identifying a like patient. So this patient in red, you see there's a whole range of individuals there along the x-axis. For that one patient, that red patient, the one on the bottom, we can find patients that have similar clinical characteristics that have been treated with treatment one or treatment zero. And then try and learn from this with the statistics what the probability or uncertainty is of a good treatment response to those treatments. So how it looks, you have a patient meeting with the provider, patient and family. Of course, they're talking about values and preferences for treatment and their previous medical experiences. But we're able to enter into this digital tool, the clinical phenotype of the patient. This tool, then, with the statistical algorithms, is querying the registry for patients that are alike and what their treatment experiences are with different medications. It feeds that into this algorithm, that data, rather. And the algorithm is what pumps out sort of the probabilities of successful treatment. And then that is presented back to the patient to not make the decision, but to inform the decision on how a patient like them might respond to a treatment. So development activities are vast and long. Again, I'm loving that Bill Gates quote, "Looks like nothing's happening for two years." And then in 10 years, lo and behold. And so we've been making real progress. And a lot, again, the Cincinnati folks doing a lot of the methods work and advanced mathematics. But here, we've done qualitative interviews. What do providers and patients think about this? Literature reviews to inform use cases and models of the information flow and how are kids working in the decision-making and developing user evaluation tools. There's extensive validation testing statistically and also sort of face validity with doctor-in-the-loop validation that's actually happening now. And then we're going to do piloting and usability testing in multiple settings, including Cincinnati and Seattle and Alabama. But we wanted to present this work as it's developing this concept to gain some interest and also to see how we can leverage a learning health system data to have real-world individual impact for personalized care. So I just want to thank our funding, I mentioned that earlier, and also the extensive research team and collaborators. And thank you so much for your attention. And I'm going to turn it back over to Eric. Do we have a brief? Oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Shital has a closing remark. I apologize. Please.
I think, well, in the interest of time, maybe people can just put their questions in the chat. But I just, you know, to wrap this up, thank you to all the presenters and authors who contributed to this special issue. This is really a collective work, and it really underscores the transformative potential of the learning health system in pediatric rheumatology by integrating data-driven quality improvement, fostering collaboration across institutions, and really centering the care around patients and families. That's what's number one. And these are actively reshaping the landscape of how we treat chronic illness and care for these children. And it really, these efforts, we've seen a variety of different projects, but improve access, equity, and outcomes. So it demonstrates that even if we have limited resources in our settings and meaningful change is possible through a shared vision and innovation, what we just heard from Essie, really is the commitment to continuous learning. So I just want to highlight, PR Coin really stands as a powerful example of how a learning health system can really have a lasting impact for vulnerable populations and for our patients and families. We should be really proud. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We are going to now transition back to the main meeting. And we're going to try and capture all the questions that were left in that other chat and maybe see if we can transfer them somewhere else so we can continue to work on them and answer those questions over the course of today's learning session or afterwards. And so we are a bit behind this schedule. But if everyone can transition online back over to the other meeting, the main meeting, that we started off the day with, we will resume with Megan Phillips from Hive Solutions here in about five minutes, if we can make that change happen a little bit more quickly. For those of us in the room, I know it's been a long morning. We sort of skipped our break. However, you have about five minutes right now, if you'd like to take a bio break.